It started. Welcome to the March third Newton Planning Commission meeting. Wow, what a crowd. We don't have this many people here. We'll start the agenda off with consideration of the February third meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for their approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the February third minutes. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Second item on the agenda. Consider approval of the Art and Thelma Bracken, Brackeen, sorry if I mispronounced that, addition preliminary plat. Justin?
Yep.
Lead us through that.
Yeah, attached to the preliminary plat for the Art and Thelma Brackeen addition submitted by applicant and owner Michael Brackeen. As per the city subdivision regulations, the preliminary plat was submitted to appropriate city staff and area utility companies for review. And they forwarded those comments back to us. Those statements, comments were sent to Garber Surveying, who will provide an updated version of the preliminary plat incorporating those. There's a few items that we're still working with them, but nothing of extent that you can see further in my report. Now it comes before you guys for approval. What I do have from the applicant is one request that has to come through you, but in our subdivision regulations, you can eliminate sidewalk on one side of the street. And that's what they're requesting to be removed from their side. And it would only be a section in front of their property and on the west side of their property. There is already, on the west side of the street, there's already sidewalk, so. He would just ask or they would ask that we approve it without a sidewalk on their side.
Sidewalk's in good condition on the other side?
I'm not positive.
Do we know the width of it on the other, the width of the sidewalk on the other side?
Minimum of four foot would be our standard.
Is it four foot on the west side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So it'd be recommended that we approve the preliminary plat contingent on the city receiving the rest of the comments. And whatever comments you may have.
Any questions for Justin? I did, I did have one. Is that drainage reserve area, is that gonna be a pond or is that just?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Justin? Make a motion?
Uh, Mr.
No public opinion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat as recommended. Contingent upon staff receiving the additional materials they require.
Do you, do you want a motion, sidewalk withdrawal?
Please.
Oh, without the sidewalk being required.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Art and Thelma, is it Brackeen?
Yes.
Okay, addition. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, next item, consider approval of Cornelius Gardens final plat.
This one's a fun one because it's an infill lot and we don't see those very often. So, um, yeah, we have a final plat for the Cornelius Gardens, which was also submitted by Garber Surveying on behalf of the owner applicant, David Queering. As per the city subdivision regulations, the final plat was submitted to the appropriate city staff with area utility companies for review, that they send those proposed changes and comments back to us. Those changes and comments, once again, have been sent back to us and they are working on a few minor changes as well. And we just got a little list of stuff that we're still working on, but it would be our recommendation that we approve this one as well.
Any questions for Justin? Any discussion?
Probably another down that I assume that everybody knows about the utility comments that were on there and all of that kind of stuff.
Correct, and those have been relayed as well, yep. Yep. And I know they've moved forward and some of those are already underground and, yep, they've been working with Evergy and all that, so.
Just a general question, it seems like there's an awful lot of staff comments back to the engineers.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that normal? Or, or?
Dan, you wanna answer?
Or do we? Or, or do we ask for some things that are extra or over and above or different? I guess is the, is the word that I'm looking for.
I.
Other communities.
I wouldn't say that we do. I mean, all of our, all of our requirements are within our subdivision regulations and that is one thing that our client that we worked with to redo our subdivision regulations looked at for our surrounding cities, so.
Yeah, I can answer that, uh, you know, working in a lot of different cities around Wichita, uh, it's not, this is normal, normal process. Dan, you, and you know, you, you did this one right. Yeah, he goes through this in other cities too. It's a typical process.
It just seems, it seems odd to me that if it's typical, that we wouldn't have to ask for it. No offense. That it, that it oughta, oughta, just oughta be, I mean, it's part of the deal, it should be part of the, of what is submitted.
I, I agree with you. It's not the way it always, the cookie crumbles always, so.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion to any public?
No public. I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Cornelius Gardens. I'm sorry, the final plat?
Yes.
Yeah, final plat. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, next item, consider approval of the Hope Estates addition preliminary plat.
Yep, um, yeah, attached is the preliminary plat for Hope Estates. It was submitted by the Ember Hope, Nikilia Sandante. As per the city subdivision regulations, once again, it was sent to utility companies along with city staff comments are to follow. Those were all communicated to Earl's Engineering and they are working with us on a handful of things too. There's probably a little more on this one than on the others, but it's a little more complex of a site. But, uh, we're working through those in what we believe are minor things now are coming before you for approval.
So, a little bit of explanation on this one. So what are, are these like duplexes?
They're gonna be, uh, a few duplexes and then an apartment complex. And that's what we're working out on the details for the water extensions and sizes and all that. But that's all for the engineers to figure out, so.
Yeah, um, I did have a comment on the fire line sizing. That, back to engineering staff, they need to consider, they got four inch lines for fire protection, which they might wanna.
Upsize.
Yeah, think about that.
Yep, and there, that's one of the comments back to them or what, so.
Yeah, it wasn't, I get into the utility stuff, I just wondered, like, are there easements for all the utilities? Are those supposed to be private systems or public systems, like the ones going along the back of the duplexes?
Those there would be private.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes sense, I was, that's what I was asking.
Yep.
I also had a question about the access easement.
Yes.
So if there's prop, some of these buildings look like they access that access easement, but the access easement isn't tied to this plat?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
So if the access easement goes away in the?
By separate instrument is how they'll have to do it because of their access, yep, the way they're designing it.
Good. I didn't know if that was already in place.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Justin? Any other discussion?
No, then I, help me read this plat just a little bit. Some of these buildings are existing and some of these are newer, or are they all?
These will all be new on this site.
These will all be new on the site.
Yep, so there's some that they just remodeled that they're going to be taking down and demolishing, so.
That's what I was.
Yep.
Okay.
It'll be all, all fresh on that southwest corner.
Okay.
Of their campus.
So are all, all the existing buildings that are there now gonna be tore down from, on that west side of the driveway?
No, there's a, um, you can see here, it's, I don't know if you can, out, just outside of the, nope, go back to the one you were at. Just outside of the scope of the, uh, solid black line there, there's a, a building that will remain in the northeast corner.
The northeast corner, okay.
Yes, that will stay.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
Is that a parking lot in the center?
Yes. And under the parking lot will be all the reserve as well for all the stormwater, underground.
Any other discussion? Your motion?
I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat application for Ember Hope Incorporated.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Hope Estates addition. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, uh, consider zoning amendment for seven twenty-three South Kansas. Walk us through that, Justin.
Chris is taking this one.
Yeah, I can kick it off and Justin can jump in as needed. The applicant is here too and they can address it, have a public hearing, but I'll go over the, the staff memo quickly. I believe this was at the last planning commission meeting and withdrawn. It was an R one property located at seven twenty-three South Kansas. Originally, the applicant was asking for an R one to an R three. They're now proposing an R one to an R two designation. We've laid out, um, the factors and criteria for you to consider. It's a balancing test, the planning commission should look at all of these criteria and make findings on each of them. The first is whether or not a change in the classification would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning code and the city's adopted comprehensive plan. In staff comments, we've indicated, um, all of the different uses of the, of the property in an R two. We've also actually outlined that for the second classification, which is whether every use that would be permitted on the property, if it were, was reclassified, it would be compatible with uses on other property located in the immediate vicinity. We've, for the first criteria, we've included a map of the surrounding zoning designation, which is mostly R one in the area. So for the second, we've outlined every use that could be utilized if it were to be an R two. And it's appropriate for the planning commission to look at all of those uses as opposed to a particular use that would be found under R two. The third criteria is whether adequate sewer and water facilities and other needed public services exist or could be provided. The staff report is that sewer would need to be extended to the property and it would not be an issue whether it was R one or R two. That wouldn't be a problem. For the fourth, uh, the question is whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of these regulations. Staff comments are that staff is not aware of any errors in the application of the zoning regulations that need to be corrected through a zoning amendment. The fourth item is whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area. The staff comments are that staff is not aware of any change in conditions that are needed, but we would defer to the applicant to make any comments on that criteria. I would stand for any questions, otherwise I would ask you to hear comments from the applicant and then open it up for a public hearing for anyone that wants to talk about it.
Okay, is the applicant here? Yeah, come on up to the podium.
I'm Dan Harder and I am, um, here on behalf of the Church of God of the Firstborn and they own the property. And their goal is to put a duplex on there, I know that's irrelevant for our zoning change, but, um, would not have even considered requesting this if it hadn't been for the zoning change down the street there in Fox Ridge, where that was all changed to R three just in the last, what, year, year and a half? And so thought, well, it's basically that diagonally, can't see it, that map doesn't quite come out far enough to see that, but, um, so that is why we thought we'd, we'd try that because that would help with what they're trying to accomplish there.
Any questions for Dan? And you did say that the existing structure is gonna be completely removed, okay.
Right, it's, yeah, and actually, both structures, yeah. So everything that's on there will be removed.
Okay.
Um, in order to maximize the buildable area with the floodplain the way it is, that's about the only option.
Okay, and you have to build up dirt, uh, a little bit in one side?
Yeah, so the, the north property line is well out of the floodplain, uh, the south is in the floodway, which is untouchable, of course. There is a period of some hundred-year floodplain that might require a Loma, but, um, it'd just be a corner, or actually be a Lomar F. But, for the most part, um, we would probably be able to get the structure in the area that's buildable while also maintaining a little bit bigger setback to the neighboring property to the north. Currently, that neighboring property is pretty close. I think it's a five-foot setback currently, but we'd, we'd try to do at least ten foot, just because I gotta get equipment through there.
Yeah, and you're saying ten foot off the north line?
Yes, sir.
Ten foot setback off the north.
So, yeah, there, it is possible, the, the, there's no design that's been made yet as to what that's gonna look like, what the size will be. It's possible we'd need a Lomar F to, to bring part of that floodplain, out of the floodplain so we could build, but ideally, we wouldn't have to do that. It's a pain.
Any other questions for Mr. Harder? Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public wanna talk about this?
I'm public.
Yes, come on up. State your name and address, please.
Dan Park, seven oh one South Kansas. I am concerned about the sewer. I hope you guys will take care of it, I've lived there since ninety-one. But my question, my, only question is, what is the requirement for spot zoning? You guys were talking about it and I never asked, uh, is there a particular requirement? Is it the way you guys feel?
This is when we looked at Justin.
It is just not recommended, but it's not anything that they couldn't do.
There is not a criteria for that.
Correct.
And like I said, the sewer. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close, close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion?
I missed the first discussion, so.
And.
Back to.
I wasn't here either, so.
So, there's, is there a question about sewer issues?
Yeah, that to be extended.
Hey, I can talk about, yeah, we, we talked about the last meeting, uh, the church, I think the question, the, the answer was, it's been about five years since the last backup, I think. There were concerns when the church was in service, I guess, back then. I know this, but it was commented the city's done improvements to the sewer system. So, uh, a lot of that could have been backups from just plugged up sewers, yeah, you can come on, come back up.
They haven't done any improvements, they've just did their maintenance so much better. But for twenty-five years, it was a problem almost constantly when they all have their convention there.
Okay, 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 thank you. Yeah, the, the city has done a lot of improvements through Newton to help with the flow, including cleaning is a big part of that, but they've also done lining projects to, with the old clay pipes that go through town. So, yeah, I think that's something the city needs to be paying attention to. I know engineering has done a lot of studies on that and looked at it and I know they're constantly looking at the cleaning stuff. And they've been televising the lines to, a lot of roots get into the system, so. Yeah, I think a lot of that probably contributed to the problems back then. But, yeah, essentially adding two houses here, that's very, very minimal flow.
Just a concern.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. So that was kind of the discussion over the last meeting.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chairman, I would, um, move the acceptance of, of this zoning request to an R two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
And in, and in regard to the motion, I wanna thank the applicant for coming back because it was R three. A little more density and this gives us, um, some comfort to know there will only be, um, two residents on the property duplex and not, and not that, so.
Ed, I just wanna clarify something too in my mind, um, I, I think I've got it, but I wanna make sure. So, I appreciate that you guys gave us the R two. What, what can go in there?
Uh-huh.
I just wanna make sure, so when it says that you need a special use permit, that's gotta come back in front of us, so.
Absolutely.
So, the, the ones that are really concerning are the ones that are primary.
They're by right.
Especially with the additional approval and other step, right?
So, I, we don't think we used to do that, I think you just gave us the list and then we didn't know necessarily up here whether it was special use had to go through or they what, so I appreciate having the, the other designations on there, it makes, it makes a difference. So.
Okay, we have a motion, was there a second?
I said.
Be second, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the zoning amendment for seven twenty-three South Kansas Avenue. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. No.
No.
Unless you do.
It's primary permitted, it's primary permitted, yeah.
Unless you do something different than what you said.
Yeah.
Yep, thanks Dan. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is rehearing for a variance request at one hundred Mockingbird Lane. Chris, are you leading us through, for Justin?
I think Justin's gonna lead, but I can jump in and go from there.
Yeah, we, nope, go ahead. Yeah, this is a rehearing, we heard this one, uh, a while back. It comes for you again, um, sent back from the district.
District court.
Court to hear it again. And normally, we would go through these, I would go through my whole report, but they have requested that we find findings on each one of these, so I'd have to like a conversation after we go through each one of them.
Okay.
Um, instead of hearing a report at the end.
Justin and I thought it might make sense, I think there's also people that might wanna speak to it generally, so just you guys can control, obviously, the process, but it might make sense to open it up for general public comment and then we could follow kind of a pattern of Justin talking about a criteria. You've got, obviously, uh, the appellant who challenged the finding and then you've got the, the homeowners that are asking for the variance, maybe those three having a chance, or also the public if they wanna talk about a specific criteria.
Okay, I think it'd be good to hear from the applicant first.
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you guys wanna come up? Uh, just state your name and address.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Ian Hughes, I'm the attorney for Casey Nitzel and Kayla Nitzel. In terms of kinda what we're gonna present to you today from the Nitzels and from some of their neighbors, you'll hear from them, um, generally about why they're requesting this for a lift in their garage, hear that it's a moderate request that's consistent with many of the, um, surrounding properties in the area. You'll hear that most of the neighbors, in fact, I think all but one of the neighbors are in support of the Nitzels' request. And, um, not to get too far ahead of things, but I think this kind of goes to some of the issues that the judge had identified with, you know, the hardship being self-created as opposed to something specific to the property that we can infer from looking to, you know, all the other properties in the area. So, I'd like to ask Mr. Nitzel to come forward.
Hi there. Hi. My name's Casey Nitzel, live at one hundred Mockingbird Lane. We moved in there knowing that we could build a future building, we moved in about eight years ago now. Came through all the right channels, got all the permits, came to the variance meeting, um, about two years ago. Was granted the variance, five to none, stood the building up. Uh, within twenty-eight days, I received a motion that we needed to go to court about it. So that's why we are back here. I've been born and raised a car guy, my dad and I have built cars over time, I'm an avid collector. I didn't have anywhere to store them, I built a shop. I'm planning on putting lifts that will hold one to two car, excuse me, one to two cars in each bay so I can pack some more in. I'm not quite like my father who has three of these buildings, but I wanna get somewhere. So, um, that, that is the whole reason for it. Since then, we've bought a camper that parks in it. Since then, I've bought a truck that's too tall for the regular garage, so it parks in there as well. Uh, it's just, it's a love for vehicles and a want for the space that I own and how I wanna use it. So, appreciate you guys' time.
Before you sit down, uh, there might be some questions. I just had an easy one, um, I, so the car lifts, there's multiple ones you're thinking, uh, see, I didn't know if there's a lift to work on them or a lift just to store them.
Multiple, so I have seen where there are three layers and at sixteen feet, you can fit three layers of cars.
Oh, okay.
There are also storage four-post lifts, which I would have those if I don't wanna go with the three-layer. And then, yes, a two-post at least for working on cars.
Mr. Chairman? Is the building completed?
It is stood up, it is not insulated, it is not heated and aired, but it is concreted.
So, someone had asked you, I mean, you had to halt work, is that what you're telling us?
Yeah, yeah, I stopped two years ago because I'm not gonna pay for insulation and all the extra BTUs if I have to chop this thing down. I mean, it's, it's been an eyesore for me.
We've already spent like a hundred thousand dollars, the concrete alone was thirty thousand dollars. So, we've spent a lot of money, so we aren't putting any more money until this is over because we're spending money on attorneys for two years or more.
So the building that's, uh, that, I had that question too, because I wasn't sure if the building was, uh, I saw, I looked it up on Google Maps and I could see it, but then the pictures we had just showed a pad, so I wasn't, so.
I've got several photos, I even have some videos, I mean, there's, yeah, that was the, when we came to apply for the variance, showing that the pad was already done. The building was technically on order, just waited until I got the, the variance.
So the.
And the permit.
Yeah.
We didn't build it until we had the permit.
And the walls are sixteen foot now?
Yes.
Uh, what's the total height of the building?
Twenty-two feet at the peak.
In the height of your house?
Uh, about twenty-eight feet, if you don't count the two chimneys.
Okay.
So refresh my memory, the, and there's also some that weren't on, on the, the commission at that point in time, which is perfectly fine, but the reason, the reason that you were normal, you were here is because you had to get, was it a special use permit? Or what, what's it called? It's a variant, a variant, okay, thank you.
It was sixteen.
It's a variant and what's allowed is twelve and you needed a variant to go to sixteen, is that correct?
But it was approved.
Yes, it was approved.
But after we built it, we received an appeal from one of our neighbors. And then now we've been going to court and different back and forth with attorneys, now we're back here. Now, we're back here.
Okay.
The task for the planning commission is a rehearing, so you're going to hear everything fresh and establish a record that can be reviewed. Appellants counsel might have a different position and counsel for the homeowner might, but from my perspective, we just didn't have a sufficient record justifying each of the criteria. And that's what we're hoping for tonight, is that we can have a good record, findings of fact on every point and, and, and put that forward, so.
So, just another question, did you get a building permit then?
Yes.
Just wondered.
When I, when I asked for the building permit was when they asked for the height and the size. That's when I found out I needed a variance. The building was already discussed and, like I said, almost on order, just not paid for and shipped yet, until the variance was granted.
Okay, so what you're saying, Chris, is we're, we literally are, are going to rehear the variance from 12-foot to 16?
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Right, and we're going to, we're going to work to create a good record on each, each of the components that you're required to look at.
We also have most of our neighborhood here in our support of our building. If you need to speak to.
They'll be able to speak in a minute.
Yeah, we'll give, we'll give them a few minutes, yeah. Any other questions for Nitzels?
Nitzels, yes, thank you.
We do have some photos and videos to show Casey's phone.
I don't know if I can screen share or I could just pass it along to you guys. These are neighboring buildings that I went out and measured physically myself to show that they were all over the 12-foot. With that being said, I have three neighbors that have it like in my. And I can give you guys all this if you want to see even better. I do that photograph a little bit there. It's basically showing.
Is, is that, is that your property or another property?
This is another property.
Okay, okay, no problem, I'm just, okay.
Thank you.
Other properties in that same subdivision or in that?
So, would I be allowed to see this?
Yeah, and I was just going to, I was just going to say just the same. In terms of process, if there's anyone that wants to see those photos, and I've spoken with counsel, the landowner, we're going to get those sent via Dropbox, so it can be made a part of the record. It's something that you're looking at and you're basing your decision on.
I would like to see it now, though.
I think you've got them for you, right, Greg?
Can we ask, can we ask him what the three other buildings measured?
Yeah, absolutely, if we have that information, but yeah, absolutely.
He said the tape there, I just couldn't make it down.
And where is that building?
This building would be.
Apparently, they make, there are a lot of things I can't see with my glasses on too.
Board, yeah.
It can only help so much.
I think you should know where that building is located. And I guess, I guess the owner is here.
Do you have? Justin, do you have a map you can pull up? Can you pull up our? Yeah.
Do you want to Google Earth?
Yeah, can you point at it a bit?
Okay.
She's going to pull up like a Google Earth image, that might give you a better viewpoint.
Thank you.
Robin Court. 201 Robin Court. There. There is my house with the red dot. We have. Mocking, 327 Mockingbird Lane. That is 12 and a half feet. This one is 14 feet. If we zoom out just a little bit, a little bit more, we're going to go off to the east a little. Right there, you see those two buildings right off the first street?
It's right here.
South of First Street.
Oh, right here, okay.
So, that building that is facing east to west is 12-foot. The building facing north and south is 14-feet. Those are the measurements that I have. All three in the Orland neighborhood.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, let's go ahead and open this up for public hearing. So, we can just, whoever wants to start.
Would you like the building, one of the building owners first?
Whoever's here to talk about.
Anyone who's ready can just, yeah, approach him.
Yeah, one, one at a time, just state your name and address, everyone that comes up.
Colin Seibert, 201 Robin Court. And the one that's the, well, it was 14-foot sidewalls on that one. It's probably, I never measured the peak, I'm guessing it's probably 20 at least.
What was your address?
201 Robin Court.
Robin Court, okay.
And I too got a variance about 10 years ago here.
I was just going to ask.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just to be sure, I came in for a variance. It was January, I remember.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a, I understand what he's doing, I get it. I wanted a, I wanted a variance too because I wanted a loft in there. I could actually walk around and store stuff. We have rental property, so I wanted to store stuff in a loft in there and even put in a shorter lift that I needed, but mostly was for storage for rental property stuff that I have in town here.
Cool, any questions? Thank you. Move on to the next.
You can't, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Brenton Ashley Trude, we live across the street directly at 101 Mockingbird Lane. I have no issue with it whatsoever. To me, let him have his dream house. It's barely any larger. I don't see any difference with it. So, I'm trying, I had a thought. I don't know. Everyone in this area, we don't live in city limits like in that way. We're, we've been annexed. We live out in the country, we're not super close in. It's not that much of a, of a height difference. And I don't know, surrounded by trees. I, I just don't see why this would be an issue, especially if he's already had the variance and had to come back and do this again. I don't know, I, I just think that's unjust. And my vote is to have the variance granted. And I live directly across the street and see it every morning as I'm leaving. It's a, it's a building, everybody's got them. I'd like to have a building like that. And I like the ability to have something like that. I don't, we don't live in an HOA, and I like that. If we lived in an HOA, I'd be up on people about keeping their, keeping their fences looking good, keeping their, but no, we live in an HOA and I want to live, aside from that, so. Get, I would say give them the variance. As a person who sees it every day, it shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm Charles Lamar. I live at 206 Mockingbird Lane, directly, directly south, the, the diagonal house there. And so.
Is that the one?
Yeah, yeah. And my, my office is on the backside of the house. I work from home and in the winter, when there, when the trees are thin, I can, I can see the, the shop from my office, you know, and I see it every time I go to and from. And honestly, when we were looking at moving there, you know, I've known the Seiberts for a while, knowing they had their shop, seeing that shop get built, because my, my grandpa used to own this house. So, you know, I've been coming in and out of the subdivision for the last 11, 12 years. The, like, it was exciting to me, honestly, to see that kind of building to, you know, it actually, to me, sort of, it, it's almost like residential gentrification. Like, this is an improvement on the value of the land because people are investing in their properties and making them nicer, you know, more, like, the, the building's not even finished and it's, it's got $100,000 in it, which is, you know, the cost of a decent house. And, and it's, it's a little disheartening as someone who also wants to put in a shop to, to know that if, if I were to get a variance, that, that variance really didn't protect them. And I'm concerned, you know, like, would it, would, would one protect me? Or, or could someone who came in after the fact? Because it seems like the objection should have happened during the earlier variance, variance hearing. And that, that a lot of this is really frivolous because the approval was already there. And like I said, I, I think it, it definitely, I, I think that shop being there improved my property value. And, and I'm, I'm glad they have it and I hope you let them keep it.
Thank you.
Thanks. I agree with that.
Yeah, come on up.
So, I'm Michael Hasky, I live at the end of Cardinal Court, so 3226 Cardinal Court, yep, that's my house there and all that property. So, I, I agree with him. We moved out there to be able to have that extra property be in the city limits, but not be confined to the city-like limits. And so, I can see their shed or their barn, whatever you want to call it, from our property diagonally, especially now in the fall. And we have no issues with it. The house, the colors match their house, it all blends in. And what we think about is he does have a really, he's got a lot of nice cars, he does have the RV, he's got his big jacked-up truck. I'd rather see the shed and all of that stuff in the shed than it all out in, in the yard and doing all that stuff. But our mailbox, the community mailbox is right across the street there too. So, right where it says Mockingbird Lane is the community mailbox, so we stop there daily. Yep, on further up, a little bit further, literally at the end of their driveway, right there. So, that's the community mailbox is right there. And so, we, we all stop there every day to check our mail and have, have no issues with it. And again, you know, I have a, I have a pretty big area of property there. I'd like to be able to, to do the same thing. My wife just doesn't let me do it yet because I have too many other toys. But as you, and, and we live next to the Seiberts, obviously, they're surrounded by trees, but again, you know, I think that's part of why we all moved to that area is to, to have the ability to, to live a little bit of country life where we live. And, and I don't know many guys that don't want to have a shop with something in it. And so, we definitely approve it too. We, we think it's, it's fine and it actually eliminates some other eyesores of RVs and cars and other things that, that would be out on the property setting, so.
Michael, what's your address again?
3226 Cardinal Court.
I'd also like to zoom out on that to show that we are surrounded by field.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We are the, we're the edge of the city limits.
Country.
We all live in Newton, so we know, yeah. Excuse me, if you, if you're going to speak, come up to the podium, yeah, yeah. Yeah, come on up.
This is Charles Lamar again. We have, we have two acres and I think all the lots are, are pretty similarly sized. And, and a shop of that size is, is actually space appropriate. It doesn't look big at all, so.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, come on up.
Colin Seibert, 201 Robin Court. No, I would say too, if I, I'd be pretty disheartened too if I had something to take my shop down. I mean, I, I'd be pretty devastated. I probably would actually probably move into, into the county if that was the prob, if that was the case. That's kind of the reason we moved there too, to have that space and have that ability to do that.
Thank you, appreciate it. Chris, is that everybody from the public?
No, that's everybody in favor, but now we've got the people who are against.
We, we understand, we understand. Everyone gets an opportunity to speak. Yeah, please come up.
I also live at 3226 Cardinal Court and I just.
What's your name?
Heather.
Heather, okay.
And I just, we love the area and I love the shop. I think it's a great idea to house things in. And I think you guys went above and beyond, like, to try to get everything that you needed beforehand, so it seemed somewhat unfair. But there's also, like, we're, like he said, we're surrounded by a field, so the view is of, like, it, what is it blocking? Someone's house. So, it's not like this grand view that we're missing because of it, because it doesn't even block anything for us or, or them. So, that was the only thing I just didn't understand, was because it's not really blocking anything. It's on their land, on their property, and I just don't, that was it, sorry.
No, thank you, thank you. Yep. Okay. Okay, do you want to speak then?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can stand up to the podium, please.
Well, may I, may I sit here because I have papers?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Is this on?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm not sure where to begin. How many of you were here two and a half years ago?
Can you state your name, please? I was not.
Greg and I, I'm the attorney for the owner next door that's.
Thank you.
Okay, so who was here? Just one, two? I thought there's the third.
I was on the commission, but I was absent that night.
Okay, all right. Well, the problem that you guys have is that you have an order from a judge telling you what to do. Now, it's, he, he's not here, but it's in, it's in your packet. That, this case was appealed to the court and we had a hearing and the judge said you were unreasonable in two areas in approving this.
Commissioner just vacated.
Now, I'm, I'd like to finish.
Yeah, let him finish first, then you can.
That you're unreasonable in two areas. And that's, Judge Lane made that, and that, his decision is part of your packet there, it should be. Okay, and I'll get to that in a moment. The, there was an, an argument that they spent $100,000 to put that in. Now, that building was not there when they applied for a variance. I mean, that's, that's why they applied for a variance, because they needed that in order to put the building in. And so, there was a hearing two and a half years ago and, and this board approved that variance. And I warned him, don't put that building up until the appeal is done, because you run the chance, if the judge says no, you're wrong, you're going to have to shorten that building. And I warned the Nitzels, Mr. and Mrs. Nitzel, don't put that up. And I have a copy of an email to their attorney telling them, telling him, they run the chance that if this comes back to the board and the judge refuses it, they're going to have to shorten that building. So, they can't say they're innocent about that. They are, they went into this 100% knowing that there is a possibility that they'll lose this and they'll have to shorten that building. And I'll pass that email out now. I, I wasn't going to bring it up. I wasn't going to bring this email up, but they, you know, the applicants brought it up, saying we're innocent. We didn't know we had, you know, we, we thought we had to go, but they didn't. I, I warned them.
Was this passed by, by our commission and the city commission approved it as well?
No.
A variance doesn't go to the city commission. It would go, it would just be approved by the planning commission. When it was approved, it was still the Newton, North Newton Area Planning Commission.
Sure.
I, I know that Ian's going to take issue with Greg's position and, and so am I.
You know, you, you gotta tell them how to vote.
I'm not going to tell you how to vote, but I am going to take issue with, the judge did not.
I will get into that. I will get into that. Here's, here's this.
Just in response to your question, because you're asking about process, the judge did not second-guess your determination or analysis on the facts. It's simply an adequate record was not there. We did not show, and that's, that's as much on, on staff as the board to guide you through in terms of what we're going to do tonight. Make findings on all five of these components. You're going to have, you're going to cite the facts that you find. And just like with the homeowner bringing the photos, that's part of the record. Just like the email that, that counsel that Greg is providing, that's now part of the record. It's up for you to determine what facts are going to decide each component. We're going to take our time and we're going to make a good record, no matter how you vote.
Okay.
But the judge's decision should be in your packet. And I, I don't want it construed as, well, planning commission, you saw that one wrong. That's not what it is, it's inadequate.
I'm, I'm not saying that. I, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what he said as we go on.
No, the judge's information is in here, it's very clear, what he said.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, I, I wrote this to the Nitzels, to Mr. and Mrs. Nitzel's attorney. Thank you for visiting with me. And this is dated June 16th. This is two and a half years ago, for visiting with me after the board's zoning appeals meeting. Those who feel they are aggrieved by the decision, the board has 30 days to file an appeal to the district court. My client reserves that right. I reviewed my notes of the meeting last night. This variance request concerned the height of the sidewall of an accessory structure which is limited to 12 feet. The request is to allow a 16-foot sidewall variance. The variance request is subject to rather strict requirements. Those requirements are mentioned in the application, are set out in the zoning ordinances, ordinances and are required by state statute. And those five criteria are in, are in the report from Justin here and they're also part of your regulations. Well, let me go on. There were comments by the board during, only two of you were here now. I understand that. There were comments by the board during the deliberation that there are trees over 16 feet high. That's part of your thinking back then and that there are other accessory structures in the city limits with sidewalls over 12 feet. And that's what you're hearing here. There are other buildings over 12 feet tall. Their house is over 12 feet tall. It's a two-story house. There was even one disturbing comment about my client being too old to even see the proposed building. The ordinances do not distinguish between those in one age class as compared to those in the other. So, at that time, there, there was a comment that maybe people who are too old aren't entitled to make a complaint about a variance request. Okay, the application also fails in several ways to address the conditions to be met before granting a variance. I mention these matters because if there is an appeal, and there was one in this case, there's a good chance that the district court will reverse the decision of the board of zoning appeals. And if that happens and if your client constructs a building during those 30-day appeal time or during the pending appeal, there comes an issue of failure to comply with an enforcement of your zoning ordinances. So, he was warned or they were warned and they went ahead and built it. That, a prudent person would not have done that. They would have waited until this appeal was over. Now, that's, that's on them. That expense is on them. That's, or with their former attorney. It isn't this attorney. It was their former attorney. That's between them. Okay, so, here we are two and a half years later. And in that applica, so the evidence before you that was handed out is the same application that was filed two and a half years ago. And the report from Mr. Erickson is the equivalent, the same report that he filed two and a half years ago. That's the evidence that you have that was handed out in your packet. Now, we have neighbors talking here. Those neighbors that have these large buildings are more than 200 feet away. And one is a quarter mile away. Were those, were those two large buildings a quarter mile east? Now, I have a niece that lives there and those are, those are a quarter mile away. So, I don't mean to beat things here, but I do need to get this before you. There's only the argument and opinions of some neighbors. Most of these neighbors, there's one that's across the street. Most of the others are more than 200 feet away. And that's, those are the ones who care, the ones that are within 200 feet. And there's one that was, that's across the street, I understand.
How far away is your client?
Maybe, maybe a second one that's over the neighbor to the...
I want to, I have, there's a question here and I want to...
Oh, yes, please.
How far away is your client?
Next door.
How many feet? You're going with feet. I need to know how many feet. Everything you mentioned is feet, so I need to...
Their property lines are adjacent to each other.
Which property is it up there? Is it the one east or west? East, that one, okay. And are you the owner or are you...
Okay, my mother was the owner. She passed away less than a month ago.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, thank you. And so, what I'm, so there was a, there was a comment in the attorneys for the Mr. and Mrs. Neatzel's saying, well, the property's vacant now. Well, she only passed away less than a month ago. What, what are we supposed to do? Have it immediately? So, but what that opens the door for me to say is I have two family members that want to move in there. I have a brother who's always wanted to come back home. He's in Idaho and he's going to come back and he's going to follow through with this. And if he doesn't take it, I have a young, my youngest daughter says if her uncle doesn't want it, I want it. And the problem that I have with those two people in my family is they're both attorneys. And so, I, so they're, so I got to answer to them and they're going to push this.
When you say follow through, do you mean moving into the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Either my brother or my youngest daughter.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
And if I may just interject, and I don't want to cut, everyone needs their time to present and I don't want to cut Greg short on that. I think Greg and both Ian would agree, I would hope, concur, an improper finding. There's been a lot of talk about, hey, they've built that. It'd be a hardship to take it down. I get that. That's not a good reason to give them the variance. So, just so everyone's on the good record.
We agree.
We're going to ask for a good, okay. Just everyone's on the same page.
Yep.
And I guess, I thought we were going to, I mean, to me, we're not re, we're not hearing about a variance. We're hearing about an argument. I want to hear about the variance.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I don't...
Let's either approve it or not approve the variance.
In fairness to Greg, I think some people had indicated, well, it would be a hardship to take it down. So, he's responding. I get it that it's not apropos. Right. Agreed.
Let's go on with the variance.
And that's your, that's your decision. I'm not going to cut anybody off.
I'm going to address that. The judge said there's, there's five criteria.
Yeah, we have them in front of us. We know what they are.
There's two, two of them. The first one and the third one said you didn't make it. They didn't make it. The first criteria was uniqueness. And the judge said that you did not make a record concerning the uniqueness of that property. But even if you did, even if, the judge said, even if I did have their application as part of the evidence and, and Justin's report, he said, even if I had that, you still did not make it on that first one. And on the third, the third one is, the one you also missed is the hardship thing. And so, you see that, if there's a hardship, yes, grant the variance. But the hardship can't be self-created. And the judge picked that up. He said that building wasn't even there. You can't say that you have a hardship for something that you don't have yet. Their reply and the attorneys is that, you know, it's my, it's the American dream to put that. And that's, that's their hardship because I should be able to do what I want to do. But that, that is not a hardship. They should move out in the country where they can do what they can do, except put up wind farms, right? Can't do that in the county. But that, they knew in advance. So, that hardship about the cost is one of the criteria. And so, I can't see how you would say, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Looking through all this today, the one thing I didn't get was the reason the property owner did not want this shed. What the...
Did not want what?
Did not, did not want this built. I didn't, I didn't get any specific reasons outside of just it didn't follow the rule.
Right. Okay.
So, I just wondered what that reason was.
Okay. So, she lives next door to it and that's, that's one of the main reasons. That specific question came up in a motion on this appeal to dismiss, saying she doesn't have standing to complain. And the judge ruled against that. So, that, that's not an issue for you.
No, I, I understand legally that might not, but I just wanted to know if there was a specific issue. When we're considering this, we want to know all the issues, good and bad.
Sure.
I just wondered if there's a specific thing.
Valuation of her property? And valuation of her property or now it's, I'm one of the three owners, the valuation of the property? And Mr. and Mrs. Neatzel's argument is if they aren't, everybody else is building these nice barns and that's reducing the value of their property if they weren't also allowed to build that barn. That's, and that's, that's a fictional argument. That's not, there's no appraisals. If you notice, there's no appraisals that says the property went up or down. No realtor here saying anything about that. And I don't have to prove that. And you're asking, do we have standing? The judge already ruled on that. We do have standing to complain about this.
No, I just wanted if there was a specific reason.
Yes, okay.
Which is fine. That's fine.
All right. So...
What was the specific reason? I don't, I didn't get what the reason was.
She doesn't want it. She's next door. She's within, she's next door and people within 200 feet have the right to complain and say they don't want it. It blocks the view from the west.
You have trees there, man.
No.
We're not going to argue this.
Yeah.
The house in front of the house.
And I do not recall them...
So, can we please proceed with the actual...
Yeah, with the question, with the variance question.
Now, I'm ready to...
Yeah, so...
I'm ready to finish.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, I ask that you deny the application. The evidence, the only evidence is the part that's in your, there's opinions, but there's, the only evidence is the application and Mr. Eric and Justin's report. I should ask on the findings that A is not met, the uniqueness, and that C, that the hardship is not there. And if there is hardship, they created it themselves. Those two, I ask that you find were not met. And then you need to give a decision on each vote.
Yes, we will. Yeah, we got it from here.
The last thing is...
We have to do what? We'll have to, we'll have to give a reason for the vote?
Yes.
Chris is going to lead us through this. So, yeah, finish up and then we'll proceed on.
Yeah, okay. So, finally, I don't know. Have you guys heard that there is the possibility that you're going to change the regulations to allow an accessory structure like this? Have you heard that?
It would have come to us.
We're always open to discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, to change the regs that is being pushed now. You know, to me, so you have heard that. Some of you have. To me, that sounds like an admission.
I don't know what we're talking about.
I know. We're always open to discussion.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's move on. We're going the wrong route. So...
All right.
Chris, you want to lead us through the...
I think I'm done then. I would ask that you deny it on those two, A and C.
Great. And so, just so I'm following...
It will result in another appeal if you don't get this right this time.
Yeah, we understand.
We're going to make a good record tonight. So, we're going to go through the...
Sounds like a threat.
The first...
Yeah, that sounds like it.
Just, and just so for everybody, just if we can keep it, because you'll get a chance to respond. Everyone get a chance to respond. I don't want to cut anybody short. But just for order, it's best if everyone can just take the podium. We're trying to keep good minutes and all those things. So, that's, that's all. The first standard is the variance requested arises from such conditions which are unique to the property in question and are which are not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and which were not created by an action of the property owner or the applicant. Do we want, do you want to hear some, go ahead.
Chris, I just had a general question. Each time, and I've set up here a number of years.
Sure.
When we start a variance like this, you start off with some verbiage, either you or Eric, who Erickson tell us, you know, look, we need to have findings on these five. You don't have to find in favor of all five. One may be so overwhelming than the other. If you could say those words...
Sure. And that is, absolutely. That is on a zoning where it is a balancing test where you don't have to go five for five. Here on a variance, you will. And that's great context. So, you need to find in the affirmative on all five in favor with a reason behind it. And I think everyone would agree, the fact that they've already built it is not a good reason. There may be other good reasons to justify it, but that's not the one. So, yes, thank you, Carl.
No, I was just trying to get it right.
We're going to walk through all five and you need to...
Chris, with your help, I would like to go through one by one.
Sure.
No comment. This, we've closed public hearings, so we will, there's no debate on this. This is our discussion unless we have questions.
And, and you may want to hear from...
Exactly.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Or the public.
Yeah. I just want to be very clear for everybody so they know this isn't a debate here. Okay, let's start with the first one. Explain how the variance request arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zone or district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant. Okay, so discussion on that, on that topic. First thing, I'll go back to one we reviewed a few months ago. The uniqueness of this situation is it's a 2.1 acre lot. It's a large lot. It isn't typical for R1. R1 is, a lot of the residential is a lot higher density.
Right.
On top of that, the other, the other uniqueness to this lot is the setback. The location of the building is more than double any, any required setback. So, it sits off the property line too.
Right.
So, those are my thoughts. Anyone else have any thoughts?
I don't know. Do you want to talk about some of the other setback options? Maybe staff could give some context on that as well.
If they would have not, if they would have just come in here for a, they wouldn't even come in. If they wanted a building permit for a 12-foot sidewall, our specs would have allowed him to go to 25 feet from a setback. I believe his building sits approximately 50. Not positive on that. This is all measurements off the aerial.
Yeah.
With that 12 foot, he can go to a max in an R1 zone 35 feet. Something to think about that. They're 50 in there.
Say it again.
That they're, I believe their building right now is 16 feet by 20 some odd feet. And that's sitting back at approximately 50 feet from their property line. He could have come in here just for a building inspection, wouldn't be in front of you guys, could have went to 25 feet instead of the 50 where his building sits, could have had a 12-foot sidewall and he could have built it barn style and went up to a 35 foot in the center point to a max.
Gotcha.
And that would have been, would not have come in front of you guys. So...
And for their staff comments, I think some of the things you heard from the public in terms of unique to the property, not only the fact that it's a two-acre lot, but also you heard the term kind of country life, which it is. It's adjacent to country properties. Staff would assert that that is, that's a unique factor potentially for you to consider. I think it is appropriate to consider the trees as one factor, maybe not the only, that it's not an HOA, that it is larger lot surrounding. And then also to take maybe some, some mention or look at just the surrounding area and the topography of the property and considering it. This might be a different, or it would be a different question if this was two blocks away from City Hall in the middle of the city, obviously.
Correct. Yeah.
So, those would be some potential suggested findings of fact. And I don't know if you want to open it up to both the property owner and the appellant to talk about that factor before you guys make a decision or a vote on that component.
I think it's also, you know, kind of important to note that at one point in time, that was the county. It was, it was not, it was not in the city. That may or may not be a factor now, but I still think that makes it kind of a unique situation.
Well, I think you see it in terms of the way that the lots are broken out, right? I mean, it looks like that kind of residential suburban, right?
Just those sort of things.
Right.
Anyone else has any, any comments on the first question? Okay. On the second question, we'll move on.
That, that's fine. I don't know if you want to, again, open it up and then have a vote on it or if you would like to just go through all five and then we could come back. Whatever, whatever you prefer is good by me.
Okay, so for, the question I have is voting on each one, I don't think is appropriate. It's not, is that in the requirements of the city of Newton to vote on each one of these questions?
Yeah, why are we voting on each one instead of...
I'm going to, I'm going to pull up the order, but I believe the order asks to vote on each.
The order said that, but I don't know that that's, that's not a new...
Is a vote, is a finding a vote though? I mean...
I would suggest that we make a finding and a vote on each component. But let me, let me look at the order and I'd ask the appellant and I'd ask the property owner's attorney to weigh in.
Page 101.
Is this specific words at the very end of the last sentence?
Says what?
Said to vote upon each question.
Yeah.
I take...
What page is that?
The final page of Judge Lane's order.
That's fine. But I mean, in the end, if you find, if you're going to vote for it, you're going to find it in my mind. But it's fine. I mean...
Yeah, I just...
103.
Yeah, and I just don't, I want to make sure we're following Newton requirements to...
Sure. And I would say, not, not to debate it, you're going, essentially, I would say above and beyond, right? I mean, even if it's not called out in the code...
Yeah.
To make a thorough finding on each component, I don't think you're violating, right, sure. Sure.
I mean, maybe it would be appropriate for us to ask both sides, you know, why do you think it is unique? Why are you thinking it is not unique? And then, then we get their input at the same time.
It's fair game.
It's up to you. But that's...
Okay. Well, I think we, we've heard public comment. We've heard the comments from everybody. I don't, that's pretty much what I heard to...
Yeah, I guess...
So, I don't know that we need to go back and debate each item.
Would you agree, I guess, that the planning commission is part of the record? You've read both the written filings from both the appellant and the property owner. And those arguments do set forth on each component. So, so long as that's in on the written word, I think you're good.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll move on. Okay, sec, so... Okay, sec, so.
This is over, this, this, no.
No, no, not right now. Okay, we want a motion in a second for each vote?
I would ask that a motion include the findings of fact in terms of why you're making that motion. Or a separate motion to make find, certain findings of fact, if there's certain things in terms of the, the written materials that have been provided, two-acre lot, the country living, those things, you want to make that as a separate findings of fact, we have a consensus on that, you could approve that, and then you could make a vote. We just want to make sure we have a clear record, not that it's a blanket yes on a variance, but it's each component and the reason for so, for doing so.
Yeah, I think any motion we make needs to have what we have in front of us, which is the, their explanation, plus any other comment that we have that would make, like, the uniqueness.
I agree.
Okay, okay. So does someone want to make that motion?
Oh, man, I'll take it. I know, right? I will move that it does meet with standard, that it is, this R1 is unique in that it is larger lots, two-acre lots, that's not typical with your R1, that is in a high-density area typically. It also does not have an HOA, like some other R1s, the, the higher-density populations, it's in this country location, as also has been stated. It was county when this was put together out there, it was county, it was not city. And the trees that are there allow for nice blockage between the different lots that are out there, so it is unique. These are things that are not normally found in R1 designation zoning. And I move to approve that.
That's a motion.
One standard.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'm not going to repeat the language since you already said it. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no, motion carries for A. We'll go to B. Explain how the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Okay, discussion on that one. The comment, our home is two stories tall and the building will not be taller than our home, it won't block any views of our neighbors. That's the applicant's comments. Any additional comments?
I don't know, staff comments, Justin? I don't have any on this one. Yeah, I would say, I mean, you've heard the comments from the public on that, you've heard of the other comparable buildings in the area, that it's not, you know, this, this one-off, and then any other facts that you find on this.
Okay, any discussion on that?
It's not going to adversely affect their rights, they have neighbors that are enjoying rights to buildings that have been approved of variance. This is, so it's not granting them any special privilege that some neighbors already have.
Yeah, I think the only thing I heard in public comment was the question on the property value, we heard both ways on that, though. Looking at this shed, I, I would question that this would decrease property values, it looks a nice-looking shed.
It would not decrease property values, in my opinion.
Right, I agree.
Nor would it, nor would it decrease values of any neighboring property, in my opinion.
Yeah. And you're expert.
We're not experts.
I'm, I'm not an expert.
He's a realtor.
Yeah.
So I need to ma, excuse me, do I need to make a motion that we approve the standard, that this will not adversely affect rights of adjacent property owners or residents, is that how I should approach this?
And why?
And findings.
And why?
Exactly.
Along, along with agreeing to what the, if, if you agree with the applicant, what they wrote. Because that's part of this record, too.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve the standard that it's not infringing on the rights of the adjacent property owner or residents, enough for, confer the applicant any special privilege, basically because it is a smaller height size than the house that sits there. It's not blocking any views, per se, to the northwest, east, or south, and it again, fits in the size of the property.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries for B. C. Explain how strict application of the provisions of the zoning regulations of which variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. And as, as Chris has mentioned, hardship should not be considered for building parts or that it was already constructed. The applicant noted, we wanted to be able to utilize the space for storage and needed to go taller to accommodate personal car lift, and it requires a minimum of 12-foot clearance.
I think that's what it says.
Now, Justin, you have any thoughts on this?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Can, can you?
Sure.
Can you explain a little bit more about that, that verbiage?
Yeah, for sure.
Because it's, it, it's weird language to me.
Yeah.
You know, you know what I mean?
Let's go through it. 56, you said?
56, yeah.
Sweet, thank you. The strict application of the provisions of this ordinance from which a variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the applicant. I think you're looking at basically, if you don't provide them with a, with a variance, are you creating a hardship? And again, as we've said many times, you can't look at the fact, or you should not look at the fact that they've already built it, that's not a reason.
Sure.
If you heard it from the, the comments from the applicant in terms of, this is why I need it, and this is the area, and if you don't give it to me, I can't do X, Y, and Z, that would be a basis of a hardship that's created that's not a self-created hardship. It's a hardship by way of, he didn't get his variance, so he can't do this. Does that answer your question?
I think so, it's just a, it's a weird.
Yeah, the wording?
The wording is weird to me.
And you've got the discretion to hear from anybody, but if you want to keep it, it's, it's the, the choice of the board, but if it helps the, if it helps the decision here from everybody, then you've got that, too.
Okay, yeah, approach, please, yeah, go ahead.
So we think we have a lot of non, you know, personal reasons that are not unique to the Neitzels, but are to the property, which is the character of the surrounding neighborhood, which is the, you know, above-height structures surrounding, so that is a, not, not a hardship which is created by the Neitzels, because anyone could be in order of that property and still have a property with no variance, but surrounding properties with, you know, you can build bigger structures on them, and thus they will be expected to sell for higher property values, so in that respect, that would be a non-self-created and unnecessary hardship for the Neitzels.
Thank you.
If, if there's any comments at the bench, it should be to the public, or, yeah, we should include that.
Are we allowed to, okay, somebody in the audience wanted to speak, are we allowed to have them come up and speak at this time?
You absolutely are allowed, it's the discretion of the chair to run the meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Any discussion first?
You know, I'm, you know, as a builder, the, the cheapest, you know, the, it's more expensive to build out than to build up. So, and, and I, I think it creates a hardship if you have to take up more of your land to store the same amount of stuff. So, you would have to sacrifice more land and the access to a, a beautiful area to build out to store the same number of vehicles than it is to store up. I think it's a unique solution and actually decrease the, the footprint on the property, so. I, I, and again, it's, yeah, it, it would increase more cost to go out than up. You're an architect, you.
Yeah.
Tell me that.
Oh, I'm an engineer.
Engineer, oh, sorry. So please forgive me, my friend, sorry about that.
Strike that for me.
Well, then maybe you don't know about costs.
Cool. Any other discussion on that one? Do you want to make that into a motion?
Mr. Kelsey, I would ask that you allow Mr. Nye to speak on that, too, if you want to respond.
Sure.
Yeah.
That would be fair.
Yeah.
I don't have anything further to say, I, I think I know where you're going with this, but I'm prepared, my family's prepared.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to find in regard to unnecessary hardship, that I think that there, that in requiring with the non, by allowing this variance, we're helping the, yeah, let's, let's see how I want to say, we are, we are alleviating a hardship of having to use more, more property to get more, to get more storage capacity. And let me tell you, I think that the community, if, if vehicles and things were stored outside as opposed to inside, we would probably be hearing a little bit more grief, so. Yeah, I think, I think the hardship, and again, others in that area, in this suburban residential area is, is not outside, and I think the hardship would be denying this application when, when others have higher or, like, similar property.
Was that a motion?
I started with I move, and then I rambled around a bit.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no, motion carries. Okay, D. Explain how the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. The commentary from the applicant, it will not block any views and will not cause any safety risk to any neighbors.
And further, the, the applicant supplemented that response with their written findings or proposed findings that said that the variance extends the height of the allowed garage by four feet, which does not present a hazard to any member of the public's health, safety, morals, order, convenience, or welfare. And it says, they submit that the applicants are not using the structure for any purpose not typical of a garage.
Any discussion on that one?
Well, I think, as Carl alluded to, having all the vehicles and different things parked out there on the lot, I mean, it's a large lot, you could park a lot of stuff out there, probably. You know, put some more, pipe it, and so it's actually better if it's in a, a building, it looks a lot cleaner, it's a lot nicer. I'm sure pest control is better, I mean, you're not going to have some of that going on, I think it's, it's definitely not going to adversely affect the public health, safety, moral, order, convenience of the area.
Do you want to make that into a motion?
Well, I'd like to, for, for anybody's comment.
Any other comments?
I agree and would second that motion.
Okay.
Well, let me start with saying, I move, I make a motion that this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, or welfare of that area based upon what could be, with all the different vehicles and things that could be out there in that large lot. A lot of things could be done there, I think the owners of the property are trying to do this in a way that is taking into consideration their neighbors.
Carl, was that your second?
Yeah, it was, it was, other things.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no, motion carries.
I think this last one, E, is maybe the easiest, because I think that if we look at granting this variance is not opposed to the general spirit, as you look, the ordinance was probably made to match buildings and neighborhoods to other buildings and neighborhoods. And I would, I would move that we find that granting this variance, given the uniqueness of this neighborhood and other structures in the area, and the suburban living of that area would mean that it is appropriate.
Okay, save that first, I wanted to go through, I wanted to read it first. Explain how the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. The applicant's comment was, we're only requesting an extra four foot to accommodate storage and car lift, colors will coordinate with our home as well. Then, and that was in.
Insert me.
Yeah, and that was in the form of a motion?
It was.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
We need a second.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion on that one, since we didn't have a chance to talk about that? Okay, all those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no, motion carries. Okay, so.
Maybe just a close-out motion to.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, okay, so we will go back to the request, or a variance request at 100 Mockingbird Lane.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move the reapproval of the application and our five findings, all in favor on each of, on each of the findings.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, then motion and a second, all those in favor, say yes.
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 Say no, motion carries, thank you all, appreciate it.
So, Chris, there's one thing more, usually it's asked whether they have received outside information about this, and if so, what it was, usually that question is asked.
Any ex parte communication.
That's right.
Yeah, if you, if you would, if you would disclose any ex parte communications that you've had outside of, I guess, the materials that are included in your packet, and if the commissioners could indicate that.
I've had none.
None.
I have had none.
I read this this morning.
I knew nothing about this until I received this.
I saw the card.
So you mentioned that you had reviewed this with somebody.
Reviewed what?
Well, whatever.
Oh, I reviewed our packet.
Our packet?
Today.
With, just.
With myself.
Oh, with yourself?
Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you.
No, I was looking at it today, no, I didn't know anything about this till today. Cool, thank you.
So I, I hope to appear on a more calm, on another, another application of some sort.
You bet.
Because I do this, I did it for the county for 18 years, and been doing it for North Newton for 30 years, so, yeah, so.
Served with you on this one before.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So I hope to appear in a more friendly setting.
No, appreciate everyone, appreciate everyone for showing up.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
You don't have to keep it, sir. You don't have to keep it, it's there, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we're not done.
This'll be a quick item, yeah, we're not gonna.
By the way, you can all leave now, you've sat here long enough, probably, unless you wanna hear about.
Or you can stick around.
You can hear about.
Sign ordinance.
Sign ordinance.
And get us the update on murals.
I, I just, I just have a question, I've never been a part of this.
Oh, yeah, come on up, yeah.
So, I, I just have a question, I've never been a part of this before, again, Charles Lamar, 2600 Mockingbird Lane. So thi- this variance was approved once, it's been approved again, and they, they, so, it went all, with all the points having been signed off on, like, is, is there ever an end to when an appeal can be granted? Or is that, like, can that just be filed forever?
You've got 30 days, I have 30 days to appeal, that's when it ends.
So every time.
But this doesn't involve you, it involves them.
Well, but it does involve me, because I would like to have a shop someday, whether or not I choose to pursue a variance.
30 days to appeal.
And, and no matter how many times it's been approved, you can continue to appeal?
And, sir, sir, I might indicate to, aside from the appeal, uh, staff is going to report of a possible, uh, change to the text amendment, and that's what Mr. Nye had referenced earlier, because we talked about that to council on both sides.
To me, it seems like an admission.
I, staff talked about it and disclosed it both to you and to Ian, in terms of, and it's gonna be raised here in a couple minutes, but to actually, to actually change the code that would allow a higher sidewall that wouldn't even need a variance. So that's an option that would maybe come forward in a, at a future meeting.
Yeah, that was not discussed with this council, uh, but all.
It's always open, though, I mean.
Yeah, we.
We're open to.
Yeah, since, since we had talked about this a, a few months ago on another application, I was, cause I actually brought in information from Wichita and other planning commissions of what their requirements are, which aren't the same. Uh, so I actually wanted to have, so preempting this, I was wanting to have that other discussion, not just about this, but others, so.
There's nothing about it.
But yeah, we, we weren't aware of it.
Thanks for the information.
Not aware at all.
Yeah, thank you, yep, thank you all.
So briefly on sign ordinance, would you like me to tee that off?
Briefly.
Okay.
Yes, yes, please.
I don't, I don't know if you saw that, there is, um, there've been a number of murals in town, it's been a few years since we've done a, a large overhaul of our sign ordinance, there is the, the project over here, which is a pretty massive, uh, mural that's coming forward. It's city staff suggestion that the planning commission look at those rules on murals. We have artistic murals and commercial murals in there, it indicates that, you know, you pay a permit fee for a commercial mural. Artistic mural does not have a fee, and it sets forth what zoning districts you can have it by right and by an SUP. We don't have anything actionable, but I'd like you all to be thinking about murals, good regulations. Staff will come back with, with details in terms of possible revisions or not, but, um, we wanted to get that as an, as a discussion item for you guys. If you have any initial thoughts, just cold, feel free, um, staff.
Don, I was too busy looking at all this other stuff.
I believe it.
I didn't even get to this one.
What a night to miss.
Just briefly.
Oh, man.
Yeah, just, just briefly, the only, the only other one that I think maybe I have some questions about is some digital signage. You know, times have changed.
Oh, okay.
Uh, digital signs are, seem to be the end thing, and to see where they are allowed and they're actually not allowed.
For sure.
I, I think it's probably time for a new discussion, potentially, on, on that, on that particular one.
If, if it pleases the, the planning commission, we can come back at a, a fresh look at both digital signage and murals. And then anything else you guys think of, we can get it, we get it up there.
Okay.
That's all.
Cool, thank you. Uh, any old business? Uh, new business, uh, I did wanna bring up, uh, in fact, I wrote it all down, um, I did wanna bring this up, regarding the, the structure height. It appears from the, what I looked at today, Wichita Derby, Hayesville, Mulvane, all have a height, height requirement, total height requirement, but not a wall height requirement. And I, to me, that, when we did this one a couple months ago, it seemed like that was the way to go with the total height versus, I don't understand why, why we should be measuring things off wall height versus total height.
Total height being the height of the peak?
The height of the peak, yeah, yeah, cause this, the height of this one was 22 feet or something.
And we heard, heard that if you did a different barn shape, you could get to 37.
Right, right, yeah, so, to me, I think we should consider that, look at the other, some of these other cities. Uh, Wichita, 35-foot, Derby, 35-foot, Hayesville's 45-foot, I heard Mulvane was 35-foot, total height, so I think we should probably, that might be good to consider before we.
That was one of my notes to bring up, thank you.
If you filled it up 10 feet, then put 12-foot, you're 22 feet.
See, you would.
Just saying.
I just asked our inspectors and going off the top of our head, we came up with 14 that are over the 12-foot sidewall, and I'm, I know there's more, but that's just.
Right.
Just asking the question, so it's. Yeah, to me. We're giving them, them variances, so maybe we need to make it a common theme that it's allowable.
And those are all in R1?
Those are, are, those were total structure, yeah, single family, single family.
R1.
And I looked that up as well.
Yep, single family, R1, single.
Johnny Alatha, Lawrence DePica, Mays, Wichita, they're all well above ours.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I'd like to bring is, um.
Coverage.
Coverage, right now, we don't have a coverage, so they can go wall to wall, and maybe, we may be eliminate that if we're allowing them to go in different directions, but anyway.
You're talking about land coverage? Because we currently have a percentage of lot coverage of a structure, right?
Yes, so I'd like to look at that again to match what our surrounding communities are doing, or at least in the state of Kansas.
At least we can consider what the options are, yeah, I think that's a good idea, cause it seems, it seems like it keeps coming up. Sounds like it's gonna come up more, too.
Right.
Yeah.
So the plan would be, we'd notice that up as a possible text amendment, and maybe have some proposed language for you guys to look at. You could tweak it, we could do it at another meeting, or we can look at all those things.
Yeah.
Theoretically, we could go through Groundhog's Day 14 times in a row.
Yeah.
Seriously, we could.
Yeah.
It probably will.
Popped into my head when he started to say, well, have you heard about this thing? I was like, that's actually sounds like a good idea.
Right, sure.
No, I haven't heard about it, but that was popping into my head, like, we might need to fix this if these different people in the, already in the neighborhood are already above it, because they've been writing variances, clearly, maybe what we're doing there is not right, we need to come up with something else.
I wanna know if we took really good notes tonight, or if she fell asleep halfway through.
I've been trying to get through these.
She's been tasked with good notes, which was amazing, because the minutes, minutes talk about how they spoke about the uniqueness, but they really didn't have a finding.
She's still recording.
We, we've gotta do, we've gotta do better.
Let's wrap up the meeting.
I have one new business item, I just wanna introduce Baron, this is Baron Hoy, new assistant city attorney.
Hi, Baron.
Next couple meetings, he's, he's gonna be, uh, sitting in this chair for planning commission meetings, so.
Did, did we lose the other one?
Uh, Baron, Baron's our new assistant city attorney, yeah, we're two attorneys in office.
Okay.
As long as you're smart as Chris, it's okay.
He's way smarter.
Welcome aboard, yeah.
I almost didn't recognize you with the beard there, I didn't, I'm like, what the heck?
I thought the same thing. Cool, any other new business? Cool, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Just ride it up so it's not appealing.